The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, May 20th, 2020.
No, definitely.
Looks like he's got two, I can see, like, his computer being...
Oh.
The computer on.
On the top, yeah. B, Christensen, and Brad Christensen. Up under the top banner, is it?
One of his computers, one of his...
I'd probably take one of those off because it'll echo himself.
Yeah, he's getting echo on one of them.
As long as they leave, if there's an echo, just having to make sure that either the computer or phone is not muted. And that'll be okay.
Okay.
Well, you got, uh, I got 28 after, but...
I have 5317.
Okay.
I've got two.
Okay. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, perhaps we can get this to the end, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, we're observing, uh, Governor Siskel and Spencer's directive of then gatherings of ten or more, uh, for our meeting, so we will be doing things in rotation. As people leave, others that come in for public comment can, uh, can come in and make their comments. Um, and so, that, uh, that being said, uh, we shall open the meeting up to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Caroline MacIntosh, and I reside at 2297 Emerald Court. I do, I am here in support of the notice for the public hearing on the 2311 Emerald Court application. I do want to disclose I am related to one of the applicants. Uh, I have two specific reasons that I'm in favor of this project. One of them, of course, is the overarching economic development and a more robust tax base, and any building that we can get in the county is very helpful for our, for our tax rolls. The second is, if you have been to that cul-de-sac, and I hope everyone's driven to it to look at it, it is very congested right now, and any type of structure that we can park cars into is very helpful, and, and this I see as a very positive project for that, to be able to get cars off that little tiny cul-de-sac. Otherwise, cars would be parking up and down Iron Drive, and it just, it makes a lot of sense to pull them off of the street. Those are my two specific reasons for being in favor of this project, and I hope you will consider these comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline.
Do you want to go first?
Next, uh, public comment?
Do you want to go? Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, um, my name is Donna Baugh, and, um, as a disclosure, the applicant is my daughter. Um, we did provide information, we were contacted about our covenances that my husband and I placed on those, so we were a former property owner and were relatives, and I do have information on the background because I was handy clerk when the other property on the other side was given to property owners under similar set of circumstances. The, the property is a very narrow strip. Um, what they're asking is not to overlap onto any of, you know, the property that is not theirs, but to be able to move their garage back far enough that they could build it on their property line. Um, if you don't have the pictures that I sent in over on Iron Drive, the precedence has already been set that the property owners who did receive the additional property from the county, and I think you were Commissioner there when that happened, gave them that property because it had no virtual use, it's not buildable, it's not widely known for the right-of-way, or an utility, and once you put the room right-of-way in there, the amount left is nonusable for anyone other than an abiding property owner. Um, it would affect the other property owners along, uh, Iron or along Bobcat Drive, and if the other property owners did indeed do the same thing, there would additionally be no harm done in my opinion. Um, as far as the covenants goes, that particular piece of property, 2311 Emerald Court, was built prior to us putting those covenances on, so technically that piece of property would not have been involved in those covenances. Um, a piece of property was additionally given to her, but that added on to the existing piece of property. So, if, if there's any more information that I can provide, I'm happy to stick around past this, and then I will leave after that agenda item. The other thing I have to say, and I would also like to comment on item B regarding the size of building lots, and again, with Caroline MacIntosh, that we're in dire need of housing and development in our community, we have interest in putting small houses on, and as long as they are built under...
The ones who can't hear at this.
Codes that would meet the expectation for small houses in other areas, I don't see any reason why we cannot do that, and would support that as well.
Next up.
Can you, can you participate in the, in the board's order? What's that? Where's your phone?
She's saying that's still on. She won't bring my...
Come on, now.
Use your research. Okay, uh, more public comment?
I was just gonna, because we don't have... That's paused for some reason, but I can't get to it.
Hold on.
So, where is it paused? Uh, Brian, just kind of...
Yes.
It's still paused. It's not yet. Um... You know what?
I think you're out already.
Yeah, I think that's it. I don't see...
You will be on this, you see, since you're so...
He's on his headphones.
What, uh, what are we having in progress with it?
The meeting is still on. It's still on, they're ready.
And the attorney needs to meet you.
Yeah, Brian isn't able to be in to it, hard to hear.
Yeah, we have to have the public have a public meeting.
Thank you.
Is it a...
Okay.
Bear with us here.
Brian, are you there?
I can hear you.
Um, are you on your cell phone? There was one that was still, um, waiting to be admitted.
Yes, I'm on my cell phone.
Okay, I've admitted everybody to the meeting now? That's it?
Thank you.
Sorry, I missed that.
Do you repeat?
Can you see?
I just said, I just said thank you.
Oh, okay. Are you able to hear and see now?
I can hear you, definitely.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, resume, um...
Okay, go ahead, public comments?
Okay, uh, my name is Lawrence O'Callaghan, and I would like to, uh, submit an application for next month to get on the agenda to have a rezoning done, uh, from RA 2.5 down to an RA 1. Many of the lots in that area are already, uh, zoned RA 1, or the R1 acre lot, instead of the 2.5 acres. So, I'd like to be considered to have a couple lots, uh, rezoned from, uh, 2.5 acres down to, uh, 1 acre, and one of them's a 2 acre down to 1 acre. Can I just like to be considered for that for the meeting for next month?
Okay. Can you get that down there?
I've spoken with them.
Okay, good. So, you'll, you'll have it on the agenda for next month, then?
Providing I have the application and everything needed, yes.
I'll try to have that to you tomorrow.
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, public comment?
Your turn, George.
Is George there again?
Yeah, he's just stepping up the mic.
Okay, so, here's what I would like to do, I would, we need to make sure that members of the public are not the ones who are being asked to step out during public comment. So, I would actually ask if a member of our board would be so inclined to step out while George is having a comment.
Needs to speak out. What'd you say?
There's not 10.
A member of our board to step out while public comments, so it would be...
There's not 10.
10 person number in the room.
What's the one more violation? It doesn't matter, does it?
Well, we're trying to...
Not good enough.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, I recently checked the area out on Mount Harts regarding, uh, your agenda item B1, dealing with the setback, and I have no problem with, uh, that being granted, but while I was in the area, I noticed fifth wheels and RVs set up in the residential area. I also noticed the commercial semi-truck is booming the residential area. I'm not aware of any applications that were submitted for variance or home occupations for, uh, in that area. It appears you're continuous, continuing to selectively enforce ordinances, and you need to stop. I have told you that I, or my tenants have been cited, issued citations in an amount of $355 for so-called code violations, even though I conform to ordinance 668, senior package. Two days earlier, I want you, Ruth, to look at the demolition of the old Route that Great School observed fifth wheels and RVs parked in residential lots being used for housing. You people and the building inspector are selectively enforcing the laws. You need to do your jobs and resign. You need to stop the discrimination. How many times are you going to be told that? Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item B, there's a reference on the last topo map stating install water and sewer in the same trench. See Detail Sheet C29. Health regulations do not allow water and sewer lines to be in the same trench. You need to address that. If it was, uh, misbrept, that's fine, but other than that, you can't do it. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item D, there's not a code that would prohibit the size of a home, as long as you meet the setbacks, single family or tiny home. You need to do your homework. Mr. Chairman, the planning commission in the city is, to date, has not addressed the city code violations by members of the planning commission, as well as, uh, some of the city council people. They need to comply with city codes that they may have formulated and adopted or resigned. The city cannot selectively enforce the law. How many times have I had to tell you that? Keith Carson, Mr. Chairman, has put modular homes in his trailer park, which your code does not allow. Again, where's your building inspector? I couldn't put a modular home on one of my lots, which was considerably wider than the trailer spot he is not compliant, and it is a violation of your trailer orders. I lost two tenants that were issued citations for so-called, again, violations. $355 fine, again, by the discrimination. I'm complying with ordinance 668, Carson is not. Why don't you cite him? I consider that malfeasance an office. You need to do something, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Keith Carson has horses within the city limits, and it's in violation of city code. I've reported that numerous times. Again, why are you selectively enforcing the law? Also, in the recent, uh, animal control officer report in April, now one citation for my stock being against city limits.
George will pick that up, uh, later.
I'll be back, thank you.
Okay. Why do I have... There. Machines are taking over. Okay, uh, any further public, public comments?
When you got that door closed, though, because I can't, with the recordings, like behind those doors bang back there, it disrupts the recordings.
George, can you close the door, please?
You need to have a speaker out here, I can't hear what you guys are saying.
Can you have the door closed? It, it affects the sound up here.
Yeah, it affects the sound out here, too. Nobody can hear.
Okay. And... Okay, uh, let's go to item A.
Did we have, sorry, Mr. Chairman, do we have any more public comment on, on Zoom?
Oh, yeah. Do we have any public comment from, uh, everybody out there on, on the phones? Thanks.
Can you, so they can't hear us?
Can everyone hear us okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, no more, no other public comment for, for the moment?
No.
Okay. Let's go to agenda item A. Applicating on a proposed application for a variance, the applicant wished to place a garage on the property, which would not mean to require setbacks, property address, and/or general location is 2311 Emerald Court, Mineral Heights subdivision, Ely, Nevada. Associate parcel number is 010-731-60. Applicants are Bridget Cerarelli, AKA Bridget Bat Barney, and Mark Cerarelli. Public hearing on that?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm going to abstain from voting from this for the obvious reasons that I'm related to the applicant, uh, so I'll be abstaining from this vote. Um, I'm not sure as far as comment goes, how much I can do, but I may be able to answer questions because I'm familiar with the property, but, um, if that's legal or not, but I would be...
You're saying you can't participate at all?
Gotcha.
Okay, any other, any comments, regular?
Anyone on the phone? Mr. Chairman? Um, if I may.
Sure.
Um, what the applicants are trying to do, if, if this variance is granted, it would give them 10 more feet, and it would go right to their property line, which would allow for them to ease in the driveway at a much better angle. Visually, there should be no impact to this, and as I stated before, their precedent has been set by giving the property to the other property owners, owners over on mineral heights, which the front of their property would be Iron Drive. And many of those, um, buildings are sitting right on their property lines currently, and I'm, yeah, we're not here to judge, or, you know, I, I think it's fine because there's no use for that property, so it's not hurting anything.
Right.
But the precedence has already been set, and it would certainly add to the aesthetics and also the cost effectiveness of their property and, and the angle on which their driveway needs to come in, and it would help this property tremendously, tremendously. So, if you want further background to how the property became available, um, Ms. McKenzie also has that background, but virtually that property would be not buildable or available for any other use other than a benefit to the abiding property owner, which would be the applicant, and they're not asking to go over onto that vacant land, it would be just up to that vacant land.
Right.
So, that's all.
I have a question, I have a question about that, don't I?
Yes.
So, my question is, do, is the intent to access the garage from Bobcat, or is it going to be accessed from the court?
It would be accessed from their driveway, and Mark and Bridget, you could probably answer that better than I can.
Yeah, there's a 3 feet on, on the backside of that property, so you wouldn't access from the backside. It's, uh, just straight up the side of the house, so as you see on the map, it would just come straight up from the street, Emerald Court, uh, right into the car.
And, um, I think it's the Bridget Cerarelli, Mark and I are both, um, on Zoom, I don't know if you guys can see us or not, but we're here to ask more questions.
And again, the only thing I wanted to reiterate was, um, there are covenants in place, the board has never met, they've never been enforced, but that particular piece of property was not included in the covenants because it was built prior to us purchasing the property that we purchased.
Yeah, I took, took a look at that yesterday, and, uh, yeah, the distance between the back of the property at Bobcat is a, is a slope, you know, is sloped property, and it's, it literally is not buildable.
No.
Um, and access from Bobcat, unless you've got extreme four-wheel drive to get up there, no, uh, so, so I, I can see what you're talking about.
Right, and visually, it's not going to impair any of the neighbors...
Exactly.
...because of the location that they're putting it on to their property. It's in a corner over here, and it would actually be beneficial to the other neighbor, who would be Mr. Stolz, who plans to build a property, because it moves it further away from his property line, and that was the intent of doing that, to, um...
Yeah, you were very, very thorough with the amount of math and everything you presented when the stairs up.
And that was them, not me.
Yeah, it was like, we've got more than enough to deal with here, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll sit down if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions?
No questions, just a comment that I told property in the area, I understand how Bobcat backs up to this property and how it's not usable land for anybody but Cerarelli's and, um...
Yeah, totally is not.
I, I agree with many of the statements Thomas made about enhancing a property, enhancing the tax base, and it improves the look in the neighborhood. This is, I don't think there's anything that's negative about this.
We haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors, you know, objection to this.
No.
So...
So, so I guess we'll go to, go to B, which is, uh, discussion for possible approval of the application for the variance, uh, for the garage on the property, which of course would not require, mean to require setbacks, property address, and/or general location, 2311 Emerald Court, Mineral Heights subdivision, Ely, Nevada. Associate parcel number is 010-731-60. Applicants are Bridget Cerarelli, AKA Bridget Bat Barney, and Mark Cerarelli. Uh, and, and then viewing that, too, says, uh, "It varies may be issued where the, by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property at the time of the enactment of regulation, or by reason of exception, exceptional topographic conditions, or other extraordinary and exceptional situation or conditions of the piece of property," which pretty well fits all of that. You're looking at straight up the back of the property in a downslope to Bobcat, and it's not really, really usable, and there's really not a saving, any reason for setback at that point, so...
I would make a motion to grant the variance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is Brad Christensen.
Yes, Brad.
Um, if you look on my plan even back, what I can help you put on there is that because it doesn't reach their requirements at the bottom of the, uh, application, the building department is, uh, uh, recommending denial.
And explain that to me a little more, it doesn't fit which conditions?
On the very bottom of the application...
Yeah.
Number 12.
If we're talking about exceptional or, uh, extraordinary condition...
Uh-huh.
...that do not apply generally to all properties in the same district or vicinity, which condition, or, 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 take, precise, topography, or other circumstances.
But any of the properties that run along, along Bobcat Drive would have that same slope between Bobcat Drive and the property line, would they not?
Well, but this is, you're, this is a discussion for a variance to, for setbacks, not for what's behind it.
I'm, I'm aware of that, that, that part of that, those extreme, uh, reasons for this is because of that slope at the back of, between Bobcat Drive and the property.
Right.
I don't know, I, I wouldn't be the one to answer that question.
Yeah, that, uh...
I'd be there for the owners.
I drove by, and, um, yeah, right where Bobcat is, there's, I don't see any hindrance, um, and especially if the neighboring homes have done the same thing, you know, that kind of, um, I, I don't see a problem with that.
Now, you see, this is going to set a precedent for anything in, in the future.
their requirement at the bottom of the application, that the building department is recommending denial.
And explain that to me a little more. It doesn't fit which conditions?
On the very bottom of the application
Yeah. Number 12?
If we're talking about exceptional or extraordinary condition that does not apply generally to all properties in the same district or vicinity, which condition are a result of Bobcat's tape, precise, topography, or the circumstances.
But any of the properties that run along Bobcat Drive would have that same slope between Bobcat Drive and the property line, would they not?
Well, this is, this is a discussion for a variance to first setback, not for what's behind it.
I'm aware of that, that part of those extreme reasons for this is because of that slope at the back of, between Bobcat Drive and the property.
I don't know, I wouldn't be the one to answer that question.
Yeah, that
I'd be glad for the owners.
I drove by and yeah, right where Bobcat is, there's, I don't see any hindrance. And especially if the neighboring homes have done the same thing, you know, that kind of I don't see a problem with that.
Now, you see that this is going to set a precedent for anything in the future. If this is just something that is going to be applied at this one time for this one property?
Well, I'm looking at it with Bobcat Drive where there is a property on one side that would appear to have that same situation if that was going to be built on.
Uh, 18, which is, that's an acre lot.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. If that property were to be built on, it would have the same situation with the rideaway property coming up to Bobcat Drive and up onto the hill?
Yeah, there's, and there's actually no access from Bobcat to that other property.
Right. And to me, it's just, I don't see a reason for denying it just because it doesn't fit setbacks at this point because the setbacks aren't going to affect any properties close by. If they were going to affect, if there was going to be a neighbor where the rideaway is, then I could see denying that. But where this, the way this is, there is no way, there will ever be anybody owning that rideaway property that they're on it or do anything on it except if you put trees and tires and shrubs in. And if they do that, that will just enhance it. That won't do any, cause any damage.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, as presented in the floor, I believe it is situated in White Line County variance ordinance because I just, we need to have the correct standard applied. The standard is not whether it would affect somebody else, but it's two parts. Whether the property is unique because it's narrow, shallow, or the specific shape, and if the zoning requirement, ID, the requirement of the setback would result in peculiar, peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties to the owner of the property to access the property or accept